Thank you for tuning into Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast Channels 6 and 22. Channel 6 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU 16 and can be found on Channel 8 with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter bi-weekly report with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Exeter. Welcome to the September 11, 2023 Town of Exeter Select Board Meeting. Good evening to my colleagues on the board, respective town staff, those in attendance this evening, and certainly those watching on TV at home. I'd like to start by introducing the board to my right, Selectman Dan Chartran. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chair.
Our Vice Chair, Selectwoman Molly Cowan. Good evening.
Hi, everyone.
Our Clerk, Selectwoman Julie Gilman, is not able to make it this evening, but we do have a quorum with the four of us. We have Selectwoman Nancy Belanger. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone.
Our Town Manager, Mr. Rustine. Good evening.
Good evening.
Our Assistant Town Manager is also here this evening, Melissa Rory. Good evening. And our Recording Secretary, Joanna Bartel. Good evening. My name is Nico Papakostandis. Before we go into public comment, I would like to say the board was just downstairs for 10 minutes conducting a board interview. I'd like to take just a brief moment to recognize what today is, September 11, and thank and recognize all of those in public safety, all first responders, police and fire, those that work and give their lives to keep us all safe. And if you'll all join me, I'd like to take the opportunity for a moment of silence for all of the victims of September 11, 2001. Thank you, and may their memories be eternal. I'll now open it up to public comment. This is an opportunity for any of the public that wish to come up and make comment to the Select Board. Pause for just a moment, see if we have any attendees online. Okay, seeing no public comment, we'll move on. There are no proclamations or recognitions this evening. We do have several sets of minutes to go through, though. I would ask the board if there are any amendments or revisions to the Exeter Select Board Regular Meeting Minutes of August 21, 2023. Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the Exeter Select Board Regular Meeting Minutes of August 21, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion passes 4-0. We also had two Exeter Select Board Special Meetings, the first of which was August 29, 2023. I would ask if there are any amendments or revisions to those minutes. Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the Exeter Select Board Special Meeting Minutes of August 29, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion passes 4-0. And finally, I'd ask if there are any amendments or revisions to the special Exeter Select Board Meeting Minutes of September 1, 2023. Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the Exeter Select Board Special Meeting Minutes of September 1, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion passes 4-0. Thank you. This evening, we interviewed... Interview for the Historic District Commission. I would entertain a motion to appoint E. Carrington Heath to the Historic District Commission with a term to expire on April 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion passes 4-0, and we thank Pastor Heath for volunteering. And we have no resignations. We can jump right into our discussion items this evening. The first discussion item is a request for funding from the ADA Capital Reserve Fund for a changing table in the public restroom. Mr. Dean, do you want to introduce this? I think we have somebody from the public as well.
Yeah, I sure can. This is a request to put an adult restroom changing table in the public bathroom over at the Town Hall. This is something that came to us from Amanda Kelly and her advocate as far as looking at the ADA fund and using those funds to execute this. We've been working with Doug Eastman, our code enforcement officer, on it as well. And so the request tonight before you is to allow for the purchase and the installation of the changing table.
Okay. Ms. Kelly, did you want to come and speak to it?
Hello.
Thank you.
I'm Amanda Kelly, 24 Prospect Street. And yeah, thank you for bringing this forward, Town Manager Dean. And this is an important issue. I don't know if you know, but it affects up to 4% of the population over age 3. We say over age 3 because that's... Almost everyone under age 3 also would be able to use it. We also usually refer to it, just for clarity, as a universal changing station for that reason, because it's not only for adults, it's just larger, but an infant is perfectly safe on it as well. It does have rails all around and is universal for all sizes. All the specifications of the table that have been chosen comply with the New Hampshire law that this building is not required to address, but just so you know, it does comply perfectly with all of the New Hampshire law requirements. So we do know that it's the right type of table in the right type of situation that would fit a new construction. So it's... That's why this one was chosen and the location was chosen. Additionally, it's, you know, just really important to allow a place for visitors or residents to any of the downtown shops and restaurants that are too small to be able to put them all in on their own. All of the... This will basically benefit the whole of downtown for any of our wonderful events that we have, just all the restaurants that we have. They're all going to be able to... Hopefully, we can get the word out and explain to them, you know, this is a resource that you can tell your patrons about. So it's so nice that it's centrally located for those reasons. We had several meetings with me, Changing Spaces New Hampshire, which I'm now a part of, and my friend Maureen is going to speak about as well, the Building Inspector, who is also the ADA Coordinator, Town Manager, Assistant Town Manager, DBW. We vetted multiple different arrangements. We vetted the boiler room. We looked at both the different gendered bathrooms. We looked at different walls, and we came up with a solution that will allow anyone of any gender to use it and only need to have one with a minimum amount of fiscal impact. So it has been a lengthy process, and we've gone through everything really well to come up with the most economic and appropriate solution that fits everything. So all in all, I think it's going to serve a really underserved, like possibly the most underserved population that most people don't even know about, get them off the bathroom floor, because that's horrible. And Exeter would then be the leader in the state in this, and we are just going to take it on the road and keep getting more places in the state to install them as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for the work that you put into this.
Thank you.
Would you like to speak?
Yes, please.
Just for the record, if you could just state your name and the organization you're with?
Sure. So my name is Maureen Roshitafard. I live at 4 Fox Chapel Court in town, and I am the co-chair of the New Hampshire chapter of the Changing Spaces Campaign. So basically, our mission is to get universal changing tables in all communities, and so I'm also speaking in support of using the ADA Capital Reserve Fund for a universal changing table in the public restroom. So I will probably repeat some of this stuff Amanda said, but I just want to also emphasize how important it is that Exeter shows that they care about the health and safety of this community and be a welcoming and accessible place for people in town and also just visitors. We have a lot of people that come through here, and the fact that they probably have to leave family members at home and come up one at a time is probably not the best... It's not the best for a family, and it doesn't make the community feel whole. So installing a universal changing table in the public space will allow for so many families to participate in the downtown festivities, dining, shopping, where otherwise they wouldn't be able to do that comfortably. Amanda had mentioned changing on the floor. There's also changing in the backs of cars, and there's no privacy, there's no dignity in that, and that's what the universal changing table is all about. And honestly, as Amanda said, we'd be one of the first places in New Hampshire. There may be two others in the state at this point, and it's also... If Exeter were to put this in, we'd be at the forefront of the movement, not just in the state, but this is across the country. There's a really big push for that because there's a large amount of people that just can't participate in society if they can't have a toilet and facility that meets their needs. So I just want to say thank you for letting me talk, and I hope you can allot the funds for this.
Well, again, thank you both for the work that you put into this, your presentations this evening. It's exciting and rewarding to obviously have an opportunity to become welcoming to everybody, for not only folks that live in town, but those coming from out of town. And it's also exciting and rewarding to be... To have the opportunity to be in a leadership position, to be on the forefront, not only in the state, but across the country. So again, thank you. The materials that were in our packet were very informative, and I'd ask the board if there are any questions or comments. Mr. Chartran?
How much are we proposing to transfer?
How much are we proposing to transfer from the little fund?
The town manager has proposed up to $11,000.
Okay.
And that was not in the packet. Thank you for asking.
Yep.
Any other questions or comments?
I do. Thank you.
Please.
Because that was one of them. So could one of you answer this question for me? Amanda?
Yeah.
So can you... Yeah. So this is... It's just logistics. So it has two options. You can choose between the manual or the electric. If the electric... Say we go with the electric, is that the most feasible more user-friendly?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes. The hydraulic allows it to lower down to the height of like a wheelchair, whatever different height, different people's chairs would be at, or, you know, not everyone is in a wheelchair, but, you know, to get down to whatever height makes sense for that transfer.
Thank you.
Yep.
And if the power goes out, does the hand crank then come in?
I believe so.
Okay.
I don't want to answer anything beyond the scope of my knowledge, but I would believe so, yes.
Yeah. Just to make sure it's still usable, right?
Yep.
If something happened and there was a malfunction, so it's still available?
As far as I understand, yes.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
That it?
Yes. Right now, other than possibly signs around town, if we decide to do this, if there's some way to put a few signs?
Yeah. Part of it is that it should... Actually, there's a pre-made, pre-like approved signage that shows... It has like a... I don't... It's not called an emoticon. What's it called?
That's what she was trying to knock out.
I know, right? Showing my age the other way. Yeah, that shows that it's a family restroom with a universal changing table inside.
Yeah. Yeah, I was thinking more of like maybe down near some of the parkways.
Yeah.
You talk about events, and I hadn't thought about that. If this is something we put in, we should maybe think about the possibility of a few signs so people...
That would be fantastic, and we have a lot of plans to publicize it as much as we can and to talk to people in town about it, but some signs would be very great.
And that 11,000, that would cover incidentals?
Yes, that's the purchase and installation. So it's eight for the table and three for the install.
Thank you.
Up to three.
Okay. That was it.
And if we agree to do this, you've researched where I can confirm we're ready to move in terms of purchasing, installation?
Ready to go.
Okay.
And I want to thank Jeff Beck and his maintenance team, who also helped out with this and were very instrumental in getting the space set up to be able to accommodate this.
Terrific.
So.
Great, thank you.
Just, I mean, no opposition at all from me. I wish that we had done this five years ago when we first started talking about it.
Well, there's a lot more resources now.
Yeah, which is really exciting.
Something really great.
Yeah. No, I am thrilled and just thrilled.
And I'm so happy that Maureen has... She sat up at the Swayze at one of the team events, and that's how I met her. She had a little brochures and was teaching people about this, so everyone could have her meet me and me to meet her. So it's great to have her in town, so.
Wonderful.
I love all the timing.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Well, then, if there's nothing else, I would move approval of a... I move the board authorize the use of up to $11,000 from the ADA Capital Reserve Fund for the purpose of purchase and installation of a powered folding changing table in the public restroom located at 9 Front Street.
Good night, second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion passes 4-0. Thank you very much. Mr. Dean, will you update the board when that's installed?
I will do that.
Terrific, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you both. Okay, next up, we have our town clerk, Andy Kohler, with us this evening to request funding for some new voting machines.
Andy Kohler, Town Clerk of Exeter. I am requesting ARPA funds to purchase new ballot counting machines. The time has finally come, ladies and gentlemen. Yay!
Been asking about this.
And new voting booths. LHS is the company that we use currently for our AccuVote machines. They have a new machine coming out. It's going to be $6,300. I'm requesting four machines. It includes the ballot box, the case that the top goes in, and a one-year hardware warranty onsite, accepted in testing, two hours of poll working, training, and area coverage. That means that any... Once this maintenance... I mean, once this one-year hardware warranty is done, we still get area coverage. So if something happens to these new machines, anything, all I got to do is just like what I do now is call them, and they will be there. The other thing I'm requesting is 35 Franklin voting booths. There is currently a voting booth downstairs in the lobby. It's been there since April. We first... I started a fundraising program by selling the copper plates in two sizes in frames. At this time, we have collected $1,550, which is enough for one voting booth. It will pay for the voting booth that's... Excuse me, in the lobby. I'm requesting 36 curtains because that booth does not have a curtain with it, but all the new voting booths that I'm requesting, I'm requesting curtains to go with them. Each voting booth is... Will hold four voters as opposed to one voting booth to one voter, and every... They're circular, and one section is for the handicap for every booth. Not that we have that many handicap people, but anybody can use them. Anybody can use them. So that's 144 voters as opposed to 77 as we have right now. The voting booths that we currently own, I think we should put them out to other towns that... Smaller towns it may can use them. We can't... They're falling apart, the shelves are falling off, there's no replacement parts, so it's... We're down to the wire. Anybody have any questions?
So what's the total amount of money you're looking for for the voting booths?
So the total amount for the voting booths is $46,693.67. That's for 35 voting booths and 36 curtains. And the voting machines are $6,300 apiece. I'm requesting four.
It's 25,200.
Yep. For a total of $25,200. Once the maintenance plan is... There is a maintenance plan for $300 per year, which is what we pay now, so.
Okay. So the request is approximately $72,000 from ARPA funds?
Correct.
To go for the four balloting machines and the 35 voting booths?
Correct.
Okay. And I see we have our finance director here, Mr. Stevens. Could you tell us exactly what we have for a balance for ARPA funds?
Yeah, I can speak to that.
Okay, Mr. Dean?
So we have $254,751 available. That does not include the Swayze turnaround, which we're estimating right now at a TBD.
So it's 254 what? I'm sorry?
254, 751.
I have a question.
Please.
I am... First of all, thank you so much for bringing this. I, you know, it is so timely and very scary what's about to happen with the voting in our state. I do have a... So I just want to preface this with I am in support of buying new ballot counting machines. Are these the ones that were just recommended by the Secretary of State? And if they're not, does that change any of your calculation?
The Secretary of State has not approved either one of these machines. There's two of them. One is called Voting Works and the... With an open source program, and then the LHS machine has... Is on it. Those two machines the state is looking at right now, it comes down to whether the Ballot Law Commission is going to approve one machine or both machines. If they approve both machines, this one is probably going to be the one that will be approved because most of the clerks in the state of New Hampshire, we have a very positive working relationship with LHS. We have for years, and their maintenance and their support is unfounded because they're there like this. They're always here, so. And it's in Salem, New Hampshire. They're located in Salem, so.
Got it. And then if they, for some reason, go with the... Recommend the other one, what happens?
I don't think they will because it's an out-of-state company. They have... The machine that we saw at the Secretary of State is not the one that was on the pilot program and will... I think it was MoFRO. They had upgraded it since then. It has not really been tested in a town election. I mean, it's been tested, piloted, but I mean, the new program has not. So there's a lot of ifs, you know? It will still use an LHS ballot, but it has not been tested to the full ability that the LHS machine has. I suspect that the state's going to approve both of them.
Yeah, I am good.
Franklin Charter, and then Sluckerman Blencher.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This can't happen soon enough. We've been running on the line with our old voting machines.
You know, you've been sitting there. You know how they work.
I appreciate that you're expediting this, and I am in favor of this. I think there's a minimal risk that will be kind of left outside of whatever is approved by the Secretary of State's office and the Ballot Law Commission, so.
Yeah.
And we need time to get these new things up and running before the 2024 general election.
Yeah.
This will give us a few different... It'll give us the primary. It'll be here in time for the primary?
We are hoping... We're hoping for by the end of this month, excuse me, the Ballot Commission will approve something, both of them or one of them, but definitely hopefully by October.
Is our purchase of this conditional on their approval, or are we going to go ahead?
I would wait for their approval.
Okay. But you want to get this approval?
But I want to make sure that the funds are there so that we can jump on.
Very smart. So yeah, ideally, it's in place for the primary, the town election in March, the September primary before the general, and then the real test would obviously be?
Yeah.
That 2024 general election in November. But to have some iterations with them before we get there, that would be awesome.
Yeah, definitely.
So your timing is great. Thank you as always for your work.
I know, and I don't mind being ahead of this slow-as-molasses process.
There's something to be said for you.
There is something to be said.
How long has it been since I've been warning you? What, five years now?
Yeah, truly.
I was going to say, all my questions are now answered, so I can say when I was the chair of the subcommittee in the budget process, we asked every year.
Yeah.
So I'm excited that we are finally here, and having worked the polls with Andy for the last, I don't know how many years, on different levels, I've seen her respect and, you know, the way she feels about the company that we use now there. She calls, and they're there.
I will let you know that in the last, I think, three elections that we've had, all three elections, I've had to call LHS to come out and fix a machine.
The old ones.
And they have been there.
Yeah.
All three, all three times.
I do have one more question, Mr. Chair. I assume our moderator is fully behind this?
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Thank you for clarifying, too, that you're going to wait until to prove, but I'm all for this as well. Mr. Dean, can I go back to the ARPA balance of 254, 751 approximately? The TBD for the turnaround?
Yes.
Can we... Is there any estimate on that? I mean, if the answer's no, it's no, but I'm just trying to do some math in my head.
Not at this point. We just don't have one.
Okay. Fair enough, thank you.
I understand your caution, Mr. Chair, but I actually think this is a higher priority.
Oh, I couldn't agree more. I'm inquiring about the balance.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, I understand.
I'm going to pay for it. Yep.
I said I was for this. I just wanted to clarify.
If there's one thing that keeps me awake at night, it's this... It's this voting thing. It's the foundation of everything we do.
I completely understand, and even if we did not have ARPA funds, I think we would find the money.
We would. I would argue for it.
That's not a point. I was just trying to get some clarification on balance, that's all. Thank you.
I understand.
With no other questions or comments, I would entertain a motion to authorize $25,200 out of ARPA funds for four image cast precinct ballot counting machines as well as an additional $46,700 to purchase 35 Franklin voting booths and 36 Franklin booth curtains.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion passes 4-0.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
I appreciate it.
We appreciate you.
The voters will appreciate it.
True.
Yes, they will.
Look at that, new machines after Thanksgiving by March. Look at that, wow.
Okay. Next agenda item is public hearing on the water and sewer rates. We have a report in our packet from Underwood Engineers, and we also have representatives from Underwood Engineers to give us a presentation. But before we do that, I would entertain a motion to open the public hearing on water and sewer rates.
So moved.
Second.
Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye opposed. Motion passes 4-0. The public hearing is open. Invite you up to the podium.
And so this is Keith Pratt and Megan McGowan from Underwood Engineers. They have assisted the town with our latest water sewer rate study, which is an update of the study from 2016, and they've done quite a deep dive into all the different areas of our water sewer rates, and should get a nice presentation here.
Wonderful.
Welcome, good evening. I'll try to make water and sewer rates fun.
Okay. I'm going to hold you to that.
Russ did the introductions, but I will just say that we do... Megan and I do three or four rates, constantly have three or four rates projects going on throughout the state, so we bring a lot of New Hampshire experience with the rate work that we do. So we're pleased to be involved with you on this one. The goals and the drivers of what we were doing for this project was to obviously review the rate design. When I say rate design, there's... Do we have the structure right before we actually make changes in rate percentage increases and so forth? We wanted to create a model. We did that on a spreadsheet. We projected out five years, so we looked five years ahead, and we're providing recommendations to support the water sewer budget and the capital improvements programs associated with it. We also looked at miscellaneous charges. I'll talk about system development charges in a minute and some other rate design issues, including multi-unit billings. Most important thing, obviously, is what we ended up with rate adjustments to support your budget needs. Prior, Russ mentioned it, was done in 2016. That rate model served you well, and the current rates are pretty consistent with some of the projections that were done from that 2016 report, so I think there was some good work done in the past. What's interesting, as we looked at some of your budgets, 2016 was when the previous rate study was had. 2.2 million was your water budget, 1.7 million was your sewer budget. The consumption of the sales is shown below. It went up significantly in five years, and our projections to go up even significantly more over the next five years. So I think that's actually about a 12-year projection period there. But we're paying attention to this because while your costs are increasing, you're actually seeing some decrease in consumption. So what you're selling, you're selling less water, your costs are going up, and if you Um, and if you look at the, the numbers, actually, your water budgets in that 12-year window goes up about 236%, with the reduction in, um, consumption about 3% over that same time period, and the sewer budget increased about 471%, a lot of it to do with your wastewater treatment plant, and although your consumption's decreases. Now, decreasing consumption is not a bad thing, that's a good thing, because it's actually protecting you from future costs for new supply, and it is, is part of why, um, your rate structure is working, because it's conservation that's working in, in part. Somebody did ask me, did COVID have any impacts on that? And I, you know, we don't see it, um, we look back five years on the consumption, you might be able to really dissect some things, but I'll show you in a minute what assumptions we made on that consumption when we set the rate model. I, I'm not gonna go through this, but we did look at your five-year CIP for water and sewer, that's built into the model, we have a $17 million CIP program built into the rates for water, and a 13 million, uh, CIP program built in for the sewer. This is what your debt service looks like and leases for your water department, so you can see how that increases. The blue is existing commitments you've already made, and you're paying, red is the new, uh, debt that would be, uh, accepted with the, with the moving forward of the existing capital improvement plan. And those projects include some of the big ones, like your new groundwater development work, a lot of utility work, and, um, in the school street area, some other water main rehab, your surface water treatment plant design is in, built into here as well. And that's another look at the, um, increases in the budget historically and over time, back 2016, that's just another view of that 236% increase that's built in. Same on the sewer, the existing debt is in blue, sewer's a little different, a lot of your big costs are in there. Uh, the big one really was your, your treatment plant debt service, but we are still building in some new capital projects shown in red, and some of the projects that are listed here in the CIP also shown, some, some of your siphon work, uh, your, uh, sewer, sewer utility work, um, water street, sewer line rehabs, some additional phasing on your wastewater treatment facility and so forth. So those are, those are all built into the model. And another view of the historical, uh, cost increases on the budget going back to 2016, the big spike there in the beginning, I think, is the pickup of the debt service for the treatment plant, but you're still seeing increases in the, in the sewer budget over that same window. So looking at the, at the rates, this is your existing rate structure, you have a tiered structure, um, which means as you, as you consume water, if you stay within the first tier, you're charged a rate, if you exceed that tier one consumption level, you're charged a higher rate, and if you reach the third level, you're charged even a higher rate. And that's a, that's a conservation structure, and we're seeing it more and more. In addition to that, if, for every meter you have, you get charged a service fee, $43 a quarter. Before we started changing rates, we checked the rate design. We looked with the group, there was a, a, a group of about six or seven staff from town that sat with us on a regular basis, and we looked at various things from changing the tier levels. Currently, your tier one captures 50% of your consumption, system-wide. Should we change it? Should we reduce it? Should we increase it? That was one thing we looked at, and actually, we looked at eliminating it. All those we said no to. Um, we looked at, um, increasing meter revenue, should we change the charge for the meter charge, just raise it? Um, we didn't do that, but what we did do is, as we were looking at recovering the cost of service, we did focus in on the meter ratios, and I'll show you that in a minute. And what that is, is, um, it's industry standard, it's actually unusual that, uh, Exeter did not have this in place, but you're charging one fixed charge regardless of meter size right now. So if you have a one-inch meter, or a six-inch meter, or a four-inch meter, it's $43. The industry is really going to a ratio, as the meter sizes increase, that, that charge increases. And so we're recommending that, and this sort of gives you a snapshot of, you know, oh, if, if you're paying $42 for a three-quarter inch meter, you're gonna pay over $500, almost $600 for a four-inch meter, to recover your cost. They cost more to, to buy and maintain. When we got, now, once we did that, we started looking at our, setting our goals for, for the actual rate setting. We mentioned we wanted to fund the CIP and the debt service, we wanted to fund your projected five-year budget, and main, and, and an important was to main, important one was to maintain or only slightly increase your fund balances. We do have reserves built into the funds, and, uh, we are trying to maintain those. At the end of five years, we wanted those to be flat or only a slightly increase, which we did. So you're gonna see in our recommendations, these are really a summary of them. So I'll close on them, but I'm gonna give you an introduction to them right here. We are making one rate redesign recommendation around the meter charge, just talked about that. We are going to make, we are making a recommendation on the general fund contributions to the water fund. I'll talk about that in a little bit. You do do that now, um, we're, we're proposing to increase it, and that has to do with fire suppression. We are looking at a reset and a redefinition, um, of the assessment fees to, to the industry standard system development charge, I'll show you that quickly too. We're gonna make adjustments to the miscellaneous charge, and then obviously adjust the rates to support the budget and the debt service. So for water, there was a lot of inputs in the model, it's a very large spreadsheet, we've shared that with the town, it's yours to use. Some of the major assumptions that we made was that we made a very only modest increase in accounts. As people build in town, they may connect to the water system, so over the course of five years, we assumed about a 1% increase in new meters coming onto the system, all the other accounts to remain flat. The other big one we assumed is, we didn't assume, we assumed your consumption would not increase. Conservation's working, maybe the rate increase will impact it. Um, it's been, your consumption's been flat over the years, so it's kind of a conservative approach to making sure that we have a robust rate structure. And then we also are assuming that the, uh, general fund contribution to the enterprise fund would go up to $100,000 in 2024, and the model's building in $50,000 a year, every year thereafter. Why are we doing that? Um, it's common practice in the industry that the general fund, um, can, uh, supports fire protection. Water system builds a lot of things in the fire suppression system for fire, uh, in the water system for fire protection, so it benefits the whole town, so we, we are recommending, and the industry recommends that the general fund helps support that. Um, we've calculated, it can range anywhere from 5 to 40%. 5% in large systems, general fund contribution, 40% in smaller systems, that actually funds the water system for these fire suppression system components, larger tanks, larger pipes, fire hydrants. We actually calculated that Exeter would fall in that 31% category, but we're only recommending a target ultimately of 15%. And we're, we're recommending start at 100, go 50,000 a year until you reach that 15% goal. If we wanted to do more than that, we'll recommend then a cost of service study, find out truly what that cost is for Exeter, and you could look to increase it, but we felt that was a good target number for you. So in the model, we carried $100,000 in 2024 and $50,000 a year thereafter. So by 2028, the general fund would be supporting 300,000 of this. And that's not nearly 15% yet, but that's getting you towards that. By comparison, we do Wolfboro rates, we do Laconia rates, we do Raymond rates, um, Merrimack rates, Wolfboro was at 18%. I don't do Pennachuck's rates, but I do know that, uh, Nashua pays their Pennachuck, which they own now, but they, the general fund supports about 3.2 million for fire suppression, so you're not alone if you do this. So your rates right now, um, are shown in the first column, for, we already looked at that. These are the actual rate recommendations we're making for the next five-year window. I've highlighted the first two, Megan highlighted these for me, because these are the ones we're recommending now. The rest of them, the projections 25 and beyond are, are kind of, they're target numbers, they're gonna have to be looked at again before you get there, as your budgets and CIPs evolve. So we missed the 2023 rate increase, we've been working on this now with the town for about six or eight months. So what it really means is, um, we'll be recommending that you, if you accept this, you would be voting on a 20% increase that would capture both the 23 and the 24 rate increase. Okay? 25, as I mentioned, would be, we're, we're seeing some of the capital projects hit, um, but we're gonna say that you should be looking at those at the end of 24 to, to make sure that those are, those are proper before you implement. For the sewer, same, similar assumptions, same, same kind of assumptions on the account growth. Consumption, uh, the consumption was assumed to be flat, and just to be clear, because we're proposing some general fund contributions for the water, we're not proposing that on the sewer at all, that's zero. So I made that point here. Similarly, the first two years, we're, um, you're, you're in fairly good shape, you, because a lot of the capital projects were done on the sewer, so it's really only a 4% recommendation right now, um, for the sewer. And there, there's some projections going forward, but again, in 2025, you'd wanna look at those before you implement them. Okay, so shifting a little bit to the, some of the other things real quick, system development charge. You have an, um, what you call an investment fee in place now. We recalculated it, we reestablished the basis for that fee, and we're proposing to just rename it, rebrand it to a system development charge. It's really the same basis, um, it's based in equity, so what you're doing is saying, if, if I'm entering into the system, I have to pay this fee for the privilege to connect, it doesn't cover anything other than catching me up on equity for everybody else who's paid in to build that system. And that's what this is.
What did we call it previously?
Assessment fee.
Got it.
And, uh, we use the AWWA, American Water Works Association guidance, and, and system development charges there, is the industry term. So we've been promoting that in the state. You really, I think Russ tells me, I think the, your original fee was based on equity? It was just called something else. So we, we recalculated it, and it was, um, the water fee goes, goes up a little bit, and the sewer, um, it went down a little bit. But it wasn't too far off, so that, that's our recommendation there. We went through, I'm not gonna go through these either, but this is all the miscellaneous charges you had in place, some that you didn't have, some that we readjusted, um, I, Megan and I totaled them up, we adjusted or added about 30 fees based on cost of service and benchmarking. You can see what other neighboring communities are charging for similar fees, if you wanted to study that further. But the yellow there is what we were recommending. Same table, just reminding you, what you'd be voting on if you were to accept the recommendations is a 20% water, water rate increase to be effective as soon as possible, and a, and a sewer rate increase of 4% to be effective as soon as possible. As far as what that means to, to the folks who would be receiving these bills, currently, we, what we do is we calculate an average bill, so we, we know what Exeter's average residential user uses, and Megan came up with 111 gallons per day, that's what the average Exeter use, user uses. Current rates, that would be a $550 annual charge for that consumption. With the rate recommendation we're making, it brings that 550 to 640. That's that 20% increase. We've also calculated, a pretty large commercial user here on what that impact would be to, if, if, um, this was a one-and-a-half inch meter, 4,000 gallons per day, in Exeter, they're paying almost 20,000, it goes up to a little over 23. Same thing for the sewer. Currently, that average user's paying about 826, with a 4% increase, it would go up to 842, and just by one example, one-and-a-half inch meter commercial there, you can see the increase there too, but that's a 4% increase. I think this was shared with us, this is your staff running the same numbers, I think, I've been told this is a spreadsheet you may have seen, so we took the town spreadsheet, worked with your staff to just check your numbers, they checked. When you add water and sewer together, and you, if you were to, to proceed with this rate recommendation, it's actually combined a $27 a quarter increase for average residential in town. So it's just over $100 a year for the average person is, is the recommendation we're making. So summary, um, on what, what we've recommended to staff that's, I think, gonna be presented to you is update the miscellaneous fees, update the SDC, adjust the water rates, which was initially targeted as an 8% in '23, 11% in '24, which is really 20% now. And then for sewer rates, it brings you, uh, 4% now to capture 2024. So that's, I think, our recommendation for current action, for, oh, uh, just before I move on, that does incorporate the meter ratios, uh, recommendation that we made, as well as the general fund contributions that we recommended as well, that's built into that, those rate increases. Future things to consider, we recommend that rates get dusted off at least every two years, many of our communities ask us to do it every year, and that's just take the model, where the assumptions we made for the year two and three, do they look good? Tweak them if we need to, make adjustments on the fly, and then do a major overhaul every five years. So that's just a good thing to remember, you should be talking about rates all the time. I know we like to do that. Future considerations, some things that we've, um, been asked to look at and made some longer-term recommendations with, with staff, was to look more at irrigation, um, and maybe setting up an irrigation rate structure to go along with your deduct meters so that we can capture the true cost of that, if, if, for people who do irrigate, that's not in the recommendation, that's something to look at in the future. Maybe additional or accelerated general fund contributions, depending on how you would want to offset rate increases, that's something you could look at in the future. And obviously, there's bigger capital projects, particularly on the water side, you know, the surface water treatment plan is coming up. That's not built into the rates we projected yet, but would be right, right behind four or five years that we look forward. So that's a, um, a quick summary, I think, of the entire work we did with staff over six, the past six months. Be happy to answer any questions.
So you kept your end of the deal?
I made him fun.
You made it fun. So before we open it up to public comment, are there any questions on the presentation from the board?
I don't have any at the moment, thank you.
No, I know.
We'll reserve the right to call you back up, though.
I will be here if you need it.
Public hearing's open, I'd like to invite any member of the public to come up. They have any comments or questions, Mr. Grutter? Good evening.
Thank you. Thank you, Keith. My name is John Grutter, I am with Sterling Hill Condominium Association, and, um, thank you for single, having me singled out in the, in the spreadsheets. My problem is this, and you looked at it, but we have one meter per building and 32 units in those buildings. So even though we use 67 gallons average per unit, it's this 55 and older community, so it's pretty low consumption. Plus, in the last couple of years, we've knocked 300,000 gallons off of ours by our, uh, usage, by fixing toilets, any, yeah, we, we offer all kinds of free services, that's some of our, uh, residents volunteer to fix things for other people, so we're trying our best to save money. But we get into that third tier. I, I, I know the solution, I see what you did, but I, I don't like the new plan, but there's one meter because that's all, apparently, that's all the developer was told he needed to put in. I don't know whether we had, uh, you know, there was nothing that said you had to have a meter for each home, so he took the easy way out. I frankly don't know, and I've talked to people about how we could easily do a retrofit of 128 individual meters. You're gonna charge us $300 for that service, and I'm gonna have to pay a plumber at least another $300 to do it, and I'm not even sure, they're, are they all remotely red? Is that right, anyone know? All right, but so it's gonna cost us a small fortune just to do that.
You're getting a yes right there, John.
You're getting what?
The can.
So, yeah, now I lost my thought here. The, um, uh, so we're kinda, you know, caught in a bad place. But one thing I keep reading, and I didn't see it in the recent report, but the, the last, um, couple, there was a review in 2001 that I think was just a, a quick something, this sheet here, but everyone says that that, the fee, the, the meter fee goes for billing and administration. It's not where you make your money on the water. So I'm just wondering then if we, why you wanna have us put in 200 individual meters or 128 individual meters that then you'll have to bill for and collect for, and, um, maybe chase a few people for that? I know there's some delinquency in town, we've never missed a payment in 15 years, clockwork, you get your money, and it's, it's, it's some, doing some of your administration work. And I just don't know whether there's a way around that to give us some kind of break for that. And I know that'll be difficult, but I don't, I, the, the fee, and I, then I was, I'm talking about raising it up a little bit, but it's supposed to be, like I said, billing and administration. And I think that this probably, according to Water and Sewer Administration, their administration budget is 235,000. So that you, and we, uh, you, you more than, more than make that money back on those fees, so. Question, I mean, I don't, I don't know, do you guys have any other suggestions?
I can tell you what we did.
Well, I, I, I mean, I've looked at it, I went all over.
Trying to explain it to everybody, you probably understand it.
I do.
Yeah. What we did.
That doesn't mean I like it, though.
I know. What, um, what the town, what the staff did ask us to look at was the multiple units, and the way the town does it now is for every meter, there's an count, you have the meter charge and the consumption, and for those that have multiple units behind a meter, there is, they're all going up into tier three. And so what we said is if you, if you looked at the alternative method and got meters in there, or even if you just accounted for it differently, in the case of Sterling, it was because they have such low consumption, they're actually probably paying, in our calculation, less than if we had meter charges for every unit, and everybody was in tier one. I think our calculation actually shows that you're. Yeah. And, uh, so what we've been telling staff is that multiple unit billings is we wanna pay attention to. Right now, you're treating everybody in town the same, everybody who's got a meter has an account, tier one, tier two, tier three, whether you're multi-units, or whether you're at the hospital, or whether you're a large commercial user, we're all treating the same. And so that's what we're saying to do at this point, and I think it's just something we have to pay more attention to in how we handle it going forward. And maybe there'll be a change in the future, but right now, that's, that's how the, that's how it was, uh, that's how it's being done. And I know not everybody likes it.
You know, with your spreadsheet, you gave us a, what do we call it? Service charge of $5,540. And that's, that's a, that's per quarter, right? So if I went that route, I'm paying $20,000 in service charges. So if I went that route, I'm paying $20,000 in service charges. And only because the town now has to generate 128 builds instead of four, one for each building. Actually, five, one for the clubhouse, and one each for the four buildings. So that, I mean, I don't think it does either one of us any good if the town now is spending more money on billing and administration. And it's not just Sterling Hill. There's also the village at Sterling Hill, which is another 134 units. And I know there's some apartments in town that, you know, I don't think they care because they just pass that cost on, right? The rent gets up, goes up 10 bucks next year because of that. It's a little different in our communities. It is at 55 and older. Most of the people are probably 75 and older, so there's a little concern for them. But I would appreciate a little, if we could figure out a way to do something that I think might be a little fairer for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gruder. So Mr. Dean, if I'm understanding correctly, I don't think it makes sense for the individual units to have their own meters in terms of what it would cost for the implementation of that. And it certainly didn't sound like it made sense for the town--
Right.
--to want individual meters. So to Mr. Gruder's point, can, I mean, is it feasible to look at the administrative fee?
Yeah, I mean, we can analyze it more. I think in the overall study and as we looked at different things, you know, the consulting team is suggesting that we come back to this once every couple of years and look at it. It's a facet of our system, and I think, you know, where we fall back on is we are true, we feel like we are treating everybody equal within the system. So that's why we're advocating the rates the way we're advocating them. So, but we can look at, we can look at any, we can continue to look at anything.
Selectman Chartran.
I have some sympathy. I can't believe the developer was allowed to just put one meter per building. That's kind of incredible, but that's in the past. I would say this would be something to take up in the review, refresh the model every two years. If we start pulling apart this model now, I'd be reluctant to do that. A lot of work has gone into this, and we do need to kind of push ahead. But I would say that review refresh is the time to look at it.
Well, I think this was the review refresh because I don't think this was scheduled until I brought up my issue, right? The chairman, I think, made, talked about how much would it cost, he asked Mr. Dean, how much would it cost to do a new review. So I don't think we would have had this discussion unless I brought this up.
No, I understand.
And I wouldn't have had the discussion until we formed a committee into where people, you know, I told you, doing some work, helping other people, you know, fix a toilet flapper or drippy faucet or whatever. And that's when I, and I've been there for eight years, and I've been on the board of directors, I never looked at a water bill because I've worked in other communities, I worked in other states, and I've never seen that tier system. It's just a flat rate. Now, there may be a different rate for commercial, but I'm only talking residential. So it's a little different commercial. We're not commercial.
I understand.
So I'd rather not wait two more years--
I understand.
--and have the same thing happen.
I understand your point of view. I hope you can understand mine.
I do, I do.
Yeah, great. Thanks.
And the folks analyzed it for us a lot, but I still think there's got to be some place in between that we could meet. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gruder. We did have this queued up. However, Mr. Gruder is correct. He came before the board, and we asked Mr. Dean what it would cost to have this study done.
Was this before I was on the board?
Yes.
Well, that helps.
But it wouldn't have been done as expeditiously had he not come before the board and we collectively talked and asked Mr. Dean what it would cost. And we had money in the budget, or we found money in the budget, because, I think, Mr. Dean, correct me, we looked at the number of years it had been, and that's why we felt it was an opportunity to do so.
Yes.
If my memory serves correctly.
That's right.
Are there any other members of the public before we bring it back to the board? Mr.
Thank you, Nico. Bob Kelly, Chair of the Water and Sewer Advisory Committee, your Water and Sewer Advisory Committee. I have a couple of comments. One is, you know, the team, Underwood, Megan and Keith did a fantastic job and their staff, most importantly, communicated very regularly with Russ, myself, Public Works, and just letting us know what the impacts were of various changes to this model. So it wasn't like all of a sudden we got a sheaf of papers and, oh my God, we have to reconsider things. They were very communicative throughout the process. So this has been very interactive. Russ and I pretty much have dealt with the rates over the last 15 years or more, and it was refreshing to have someone else do the heavy lifting. And they did a great job, and we really appreciate your efforts. But having said that, looking at the sort of schedule of events, our experience, we haven't changed rates in two years. And up until quite recently, with some events that have happened, it hasn't really been a problem. We haven't, our reserves have been strong, and our cash flow has been relatively good. So I would recommend not doing such a large increase right away. And I say that, I apologize for having this be an individual thing. We had a meeting as the Water and Sewer Committee in August. Molly and I were the only ones who felt compelled to show up, so we did not have a quorum, and we're not able to discuss the rate study and make recommendations to you folks. Our meeting is Wednesday night, so what I'm saying, if you want, we can retroactively or proactively on Wednesday come up with our recommendations. But I think, and I hope you would back me up on this, I would recommend a smaller increase, the initial 8.0%, and see how it goes. We're already, you know, on a schedule to look at this more regularly. Again, Russ and I look at this pretty much every six months, you know, the rates anyway. So I would recommend, in view of what the voters and the ratepayers have had to deal with in the last, you know, month or so, luckily, we were able, Public Works was able to shift some projects around so that the siphon project is not going to impact the rates on a capital basis. But I just, I think it'd be worthwhile giving people a break a little bit, and let's just see how it goes. You know, we can always review things and do something next year. Again, I haven't talked to Russ about this, but I think our committee would sort of roll this around and come up with a similar recommendation. But, you know, as the chair and as the chair of the Budget Committee, that seems like a reasonable way to go, given what our past history has been. So that's that. And then the last thing would be on the fire suppression. I know, again, that's a big nut to, you know, to consider, but we have been talking about this on the budget side of things for a number of years, of shifting more general fund costs from water and sewer into the general fund. So we'll be discussing this during the budget process in another month or two, but I'm pretty sure that our committee would wholeheartedly support that $100,000 shift, but it's currently 20, I think, you know, and bump that up again, sort of like the paving discussion a number of years ago. It's a big band-aid to rip off, but once it's done, it's a fair approach. And again, I think the Water and Sewer Committee and the Budget Committee would wholeheartedly support that approach. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. We still have the public hearing open. Once we close it, we can bring it back to the board, but I, you know, I would offer up that we have the ability to hold a second public hearing. It's unfortunate that you didn't have a quorum in August because, obviously, we're very interested in what the Water and Sewer Committee has to say and weigh in on this. We're going to keep the public hearing open until the public has spoken. We'll come back and deliberate, but I think that second public hearing would be an option that I would ask the board to consider. Are there any other members of the public? There's nobody online on Zoom. If there are no other members of the public, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing at this time.
So moved.
Second?
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Public hearing is closed. We'll bring it back to the board. Questions or comments? Start with you, Selectman Belanger.
Yeah, no, I'm, thank you, Mr. Kelly, for coming and speaking, because I was glad to see you walk through the door. It's invaluable, his knowledge, and I would really like to do the second hearing as he's asked us to do and let the Water and Sewer Committee weigh in. I saw Molly nodding, so I'm pretty sure she's for that, and go from there.
Selectman Chartran.
You okay?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I think a second hearing is definitely in order. Hopefully, there's--
From a scheduling perspective, in two weeks, you're going to be receiving the budget from Russ. You know, I'll be at that meeting, you know, to start that process off. So if you wanted to have 10 minutes in the beginning to do that--
We can schedule the public, we can schedule the second hearing whenever you're available after--
Right. So I'll be here on the, whatever that is--
25th.
25th.
Yep.
So if you want to do that, I'll have our response from the Water and Sewer Committee at that time--
We'd like that.
--just as a scheduling matter.
Yeah, so just to finish, I think that's in order. I am going to put a marker down that I am reluctant to ignore professional advice, and I'm a big fan of this model. And I understand your point of view, Chairman Kelly, but I'm going to be skeptical. And we'll have another hearing, it sounds like. Yeah.
Well, you know, I agree with you, Selectman Chartran, but we, and I thank you. I mean, this was a very robust, thorough report. Your presentation was as you promised. It was straightforward, and it was easy to understand. But we do have a longstanding Water and Sewer Commission, and whether or not we end up agreeing with them, I think that we owe it to them to make their recommendation. It's unfortunate they couldn't meet in August. But we appreciate the work you folks have done, and just need another public hearing to sort it through and make sure we're doing the right thing for our ratepayers.
Yep.
Great.
It's worth noting, too, Mr. Chair, that these rates that are being discussed are scheduled to, if they are adopted, would go into place with the first billing in January of 2024.
Correct.
So from a timing perspective, there is more time to digest this and figure out exactly what direction you want to go in.
Thank you, because we don't make decisions in haste. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gruder.
Just let us know if you'd like us back.
Yes. Sounds good.
Thank you, boss.
Yes, you want us back?
I think if it's not inconvenient, it might be valuable, if at least one of you can come back in case we have any further questions.
Sure, absolutely.
Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Okay, our next two action items. We have with us interim Public Works Director Paul Velasic, and we also have Water and Sewer Director Steve Dalton. It's been a while.
Yeah, it has been a while.
Nice to see you.
I'm here tonight for two projects, same as Steve Dalton, the interim Water and Sewer Superintendent. The first project I'd like to talk about is the Court Street Pump Station upgrades. At the last town warrant vote, Article 8, the town approved $400,000 for the replacement of pump equipment in the Court Street Pump Station. The department went and solicited three vendor quotes. It took a little while to iron out all the specifics with that, but three were received. And we are recommending a ward of bid to advance, not, it wasn't a bid, it was a award of a quote, to Advance Pump Company in the amount of $221,583.06. And they are the lowest bidder, and we also think that they are, had the most inclusive package also.
Mr. Velasic, have we done work with them before?
Well, that's why we got Mr. Dalton here.
Good evening, Mr. Dalton. Thank you for coming tonight.
Good evening. Steve Dalton, interim Water and Sewer Superintendent. We have purchased parts from them. They're a vendor that we do currently use. We haven't actually had them do work in a pump station. We typically, on smaller stuff, we have a maintenance technician that does the work internally. This is a little bit of a larger-scale project.
Okay.
So we would have, we solicited quotes to have it done. But no, they have not done the actual work.
Thank you very much.
They've been around for a long time.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for either Mr. Dalton or Mr. Velasic? It's nice that we're moving forward on yet another article that the vote is passed in March. If there are no questions or comments, I would entertain a motion to award the pump replacement project from Article 8 of the 2023 Town Warrant, which was the replacement of pump equipment at the Court Street Pump Station, awarded to Advanced Pump Company in the amount of $221,583.06.
So moved. Second?
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion passes 4-0. Thank you. Please.
Okay, so the second project is the septic receiving upgrade. And last year, we had the visit from the Department of Labor, and we were operating facility down there, and there was potential unauthorized personnel entering into the building. We didn't have a dedicated employee to watch over what was going on, and some of the metering was not as specific as it could have been. So we had to shut down that operation. And also with, in December of '22, we had a contract awarded to Right Pierce to design modifications for the septic receiving upgrade. Now, when we shut down, there was a good amount of septic revenues, too, that we would get. We'd get over $200,000 a year because of the septic. And we're not getting that right at the moment. And the plan was to go ahead and design the project, and then potentially use sewer reserve funds to finance it. Well, that was at the beginning of 2023. And then we all know that we had to use some of those funds for the installation of the initial barrel for the siphon project. But now with the state revolving fund coming to fruition to replenish some of those sewer reserves, I'm here to ask that we be able to use the sewer reserve funds for the construction of the project. In the meantime, between the beginning of the year and now, we also tried to apply for SRF funding for this particular project. We were not awarded any of that in the pre-apps. And also, if we did, there was a certain amount of equipment that we could not be guaranteed, the ones that we wanted would be allowed with that SRF funding or alternatives being required. So without us needing to be SRF, you know, we're here to ask for the use of sewer reserves so that we can start constructing this project or just about ready to start the construction of it, with a bidding in 2024 and completion in October 2024.
Thank you. Mr. Dean, do we have a balance on the sewer reserve fund?
So our projected end-of-year balance, that includes the use of $1.15 million for the siphons, is $4.5 million.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chartran.
So if I'm understanding correctly, getting this project done would allow us to begin accepting-- accepting? And we, that's revenue. And it's revenue that is greater than the expenses that are incurred. So it's a, it's actually a source of funds.
Yeah, it's a source of funds, and I think it's about four or five-year payback for that.
I'm sorry?
It'll be a four or five-year that you use those funds for, that you receive them for septic that could pay for the project.
Yeah, and it always exceeds the cost of processing that, I assume, or we wouldn't do it.
Right.
So this seems like a smart move, because we're not currently getting that revenue.
Correct.
Yeah, I'm in favor of this.
In 2021, we brought in $240,000 in septic revenue, and in 2022 and 11 months, we brought in $270,000. So it gives you an idea of order of magnitude, what we're looking at for revenue. We're also going to contemplate looking at the septic rates as well, but we'll be back with that once the facility is closer to coming online.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions or comments for Mr. Velasic? And seeing none, I would entertain a motion to authorize up to $802,000 from the sewer reserves for the purpose of renovations and updating of an upgraded septic facility at 13 New Fields Road.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion passes four zero. Thank you. Thank you both.
Right.
Thank you, Mr. Dalton. That concludes our discussion items for this evening, moving to our regular business. Absent Selectwoman Gilman, who's our clerk, Selectwoman Belanger, if you would, if you could move, and if you look at the map lot in unit, they are the same, so you can consolidate it into one motion.
If I could consolidate?
Please do.
I move. Map 64, Lot 105, Unit 82, in the amount of $504.96 for the tax year 2019, $596.31 for the tax year 2020, $588.82 for the tax year 2021, $605.36 for the tax year 2022, and $537.8 for the tax year 2023.
Is there a second, a motion and a second? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion passes four zero.
Okay, it's been a while since I've been the clerk. I don't know how to do the intent to cut, do I, map? It looks like map and lot, map number five, lot one, for...
One year.
One year for a cut. That's all I have for information. That's it? That's all I have to say?
That's it.
That's it. Thank you.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion passes four zero. Thank you, Selectwoman Belanger.
My pleasure.
Mr. Dean, I know we need to move to accept the MS 535 as well as the MS 232. Did you want to, you and Mr. Stevens, want to speak to this briefly?
I would just say that the MS 535 is prepared by the Finance Department. It is our financial report of the budget for the year ending December 31, 2022. And then the 232 is an amended form of appropriation that includes the recent vote on the sewer siphon.
Okay, great. Thanks. Any questions for Mr. Dean and Mr. Stevens? Seeing none, I will first entertain a motion to accept the New Hampshire Department of Revenue Administration MS 535 Financial Report of the Budget for the Town of Exeter for the period ending December 31, 2022.
So moved.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion passes four zero. And if there are no questions or comments, I would entertain a motion to accept the New Hampshire Department of Revenue Administration MS 232 for the year 2023.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion passes four zero. Give me one second to catch up with my paperwork. Okay, before us, we have a special event application that is coming before the select board, because I believe there's alcohol involved, Mr. Dean. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And this is for the Exeter Parks and Recreation Murder Mystery Dinner, and that's to be held at the Town Hall.
Town Hall.
October 27. It actually looks interesting and fun.
Well, if there has a question or a comment.
Just to clarify, aren't all Park and Rec permits go before the board, since they're the perma team? That would, it's not just because of the alcohol?
I thought it was because it was for the alcohol.
Just for alcohol.
No, but because they're also, they're the ones requiring, requesting the permit.
Oh, they're requesting the permit.
Yeah.
Correct. Powder keg, et cetera.
But there's also alcohol involved.
But there is also alcohol.
Okay.
Yes, yeah. We've worked it all out.
Never mind. Okay. Are there any questions or comments? If none...
Going to be very fun.
It sounds fun. I would entertain a motion to approve the special event application for the Murder Mystery Dinner to be held at the Town Hall on Friday, October 27, from 5:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. that is being sponsored by the Exeter Park and Recreation Department.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Or so.
Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes four zero. Thank you. Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
There's something on the back of the last page of the MS 232.
Yeah, Parks and Rec.
Was that a mistake?
I might have missed that. I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's a Parks and Rec.
Is that the memo?
Yes.
Parks and Rec?
Yep.
Okay.
Are we ignoring, are we ignoring that for now?
No, no, I, um, thank you.
Tennis courts are delayed.
If you all just sign the two first pages of my...
No, but Mr., I missed this, Mr. Shartran.
In the packet.
And that's what happens sometimes when it's on two pages. For instance, Mr. Velasic's memo was misfiled under another...
Right.
So, thank you, Mr. Shartran, because I did miss this.
No problem.
In my review of the packet. Are we moving forward with this?
So the tennis court discussion, I got a note from the Parks and Recreation Director today that he would like to table the tennis court discussion as they're working on reworking the estimate cost for that particular project.
You just knew that we were skipping that. You're very kind. Mr. Dean, Town Manager's report, please.
Okay, we are deep into the parking, traffic, and pedestrian analysis work. Selectwoman Belanger's been supporting that as well, and we've had two online meetings, August 22 and September 5, with the consultants. They were also scheduled to be out last week doing traffic counts, so that project is ongoing. If you remember, that was part of a Warren article from Town Meeting. So that project continues to go on. We held a department head meeting on August 30, and we held also another meeting with a smaller group of the department managers on September 5 to talk strategic planning and other items. The new fuel contracts are in place. The newest rates are $3.09 for unleaded and $3.49 for diesel. So compared to market, we're still doing pretty favorably there, which is good. Budget meetings continue. Obviously, we've been working hard with Finance Director Stevens and Assistant Town Manager Roy, meeting with all the different departments and going through the budget requests and really honing in on the numbers. So we expect to be able to put something together and be drafting a preliminary budget here very shortly for the board. The trustees of trust funds held a meeting this morning. I was able to attend with the chair, Mr. Chair, as well as Assistant Town Manager Roy and Finance Director Stevens. So there was some discussion at that meeting about capital improvements, and I thought we made some pretty good progress as far as how to define capital improvements and what money is being spent. So we're continuing to keep that dialogue open with our very active new trustees of trust funds group. Then the Housing Advisory Committee, I was able to attend that last Friday, and the subject was 79E, which I know Selectwoman Belanger will speak to as well. There is a recommendation forthcoming on that from staff as far as what to do with 79E. At this point, we're looking at giving some interim recommendations as to how to handle it while it's still on the books, but also, just to warm the board up, we are actually talking about suggesting it be repealed. So that is something that was, got a lot of conversation at Housing Advisory Committee, and I know, again, Selectwoman Belanger could speak to that as well. We did unfortunately have to execute one tax collector deed. It is on 78 Old Town Farm Road, so just wanted to make the board aware of that. It is usually when this happens, and it is very rare to have it happen in Exeter, but when it does happen, usually you are looking at a buyback agreement. So at this stage in the process, the property owner has 90 days to redeem the property, so we'll keep you posted on how things are going with that. And again, I want to thank the Deputy Tax Collector Melissa Hites, who has worked very, very hard and diligently on all the tax deeding issues that we've had and is doing a great job for us. So thank you to her. Thanks, Melissa. And tomorrow, I'll be meeting with interim Director Paul Velasic to talk about Pickpocket Dam, so the board is aware there is a potential grant opportunity that NOAA is talking with the town about. It would involve if we moved forward with dam removal for Pickpocket, and that is sort of the carrot that the program puts out there for you. And that may be something that we are able to react quickly to or not, but VHB is doing work on that as far as being able to present some options. So that's just for information tonight, that that is in the offing, and we may be coming to you sooner rather than later to have that conversation with you.
Great.
Exeter Town Hall is going to be the place of some political events, October 9 through the 15. They're going through Gannett News for that. That is a Town Hall primary-type exercise where candidates are coming in for Town Hall roundtable-style events at the Town Hall. So that's coming up next month, and that will be, that'll be a pretty big, pretty big deal for the community, I'm sure. So, and the powder keg still needs volunteers. And unless there are questions, that's my report.
Any update on the Town Hall work inside?
Actually, I believe we have some railings that have been put up.
Okay.
And they have met with, we've been working closely with Selectwoman Gilman on that, and things seem to be coming along well.
Okay.
So progress is being made.
And the new chairs are in, and...
The new chairs are in. The dollies are ordered. They are on order right now. We're waiting for them to come.
Any estimated date of arrival?
I'm trying to get it.
Thank you.
Trying to get that date to that.
I just want to, just curious, I know the chairs were there, but dollies, too?
Yes.
Yeah. Just the manpower itself was a reason why we pushed for both.
Yep.
Hazard meeting? You had hazard meeting, and I couldn't get to it. Wasn't there just a hazard meeting?
Scheduled for Thursday.
And I, that's the one I can't make, so I'll be interested to know what the next one is, because I really wanted to go.
Selectwoman Shartran?
So the railings that have been installed, are the balconies now usable?
I'm going to ask the Assistant Town Manager. She's been spearheading this, so...
Thank you.
She can give you the instant update.
So there was a single railing installed as a test. We had Jeff Beck Maintenance Superintendent had what would pass DOL fabricated. It had to be removed to bring back to the fabricator to be used as the model. So now he's gone ahead and ordered the rest of them, and then he's hoping to have them all installed by the end of the month, beginning of October. That is...
And then the balcony would be usable, yeah?
Yeah, at that point, then the balcony can be used.
That's awesome. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Dean?
I'm all set.
Great.
Thank you.
Select Board Committee reports. Selectwoman Belanger?
I have a planning board meeting on August 24. There was the second CIP public hearing. We haven't received that letter yet from the planning board yet, I guess, right? But they, there were two things. They really stressed their support for the facilities for the new police department and fire department substation. They strongly recommend that. And they also, several members commented on how great they felt the department has, did their presentation, how thorough they were, how they, they really, it shows that our department has strived to do our needs and to do it in the most fiscal, responsible way possible. So I wanted to pass that along. And then there were 14 Hobart Street Site Plan Shoreline Condition approved. Eversource is doing some more work on replacing some transmission poles. Powder Mill Road, 24 Powder Mill Road came up again. That was finally approved for minor subdivision. That included a wetland conditional use permit for their driveway to be constructed. 18B Chill Road approved minor subdivision, one lots into two. 45 Pine Street came back up again, minor subdivision shoreline conditional permit that was approved. There was a public hearing to amend Section 9.9 Wetland Shoreland buffers on the board site, the planning board site plan review and subdivision regulations by eliminating the wetland waiver process. It was duplicative, so it was really just to try to take away one that wasn't necessary. I'm not going to say the name of this company right. Glurps, the, they make really nice slippers? Slippers. They asked, they were, had, they had sold, they weren't going to build. Now they've asked for a year extension, so that's hopeful, at least. And then the planning department is working on returning funds that apparently we've had for quite a while, from projects where people have to put money in. One of them was Sterling Hill. They had money to put a light at the end of Guinea Road that never happened, so that money has to be returned. Mr. Sharples talked about the facility assessment report, which I'm assuming we'll see at some point, right?
Yes.
And that he felt it was invaluable, so we'll get ahold of that. And I reminded the planning board of the Housing Advisory Committee, Sightwalk in Dover, that's this Wednesday. Exciting.
I'm sorry, what time is that?
Is at 5:00.
Thank you.
And my apologies, I did not bring the agenda, so I do have it in my purse if anybody wants the address. And then we had a Housing Advisory Committee on Friday, September 8, with the continued discussion on 79E. I'll just cover the basics on this. So the Housing Advisory Committee really consists of the planner, Doug Eastman, Darren, Ross was there, I was there, our chair, Lindsey Thon was there. So we'd been talking through the pros and cons of this, and, you know, the 79E was originally put there because it was to develop a downtown that was struggling, and we felt ours really isn't struggling. And, you know, we were concerned when, was it 2014, when that board decided to give it a try, because the IOC had been sitting there for vacant. And it's, we're thriving, and we just felt that we really, there are other ways to have incentivized things like that. And so, as Ross said, Doug, Darren, Dave are going to get together and sit down with Ross and come up with a presentation on ways that we might be able to do better by the taxpayers and not give away, I don't want to say give away tax money for any amount of years, that's not the right way of putting it, but other solutions, other ways, incentives, density and things like that. So that's where that came from. And the MUND, by the way, is one of the ways that we already have them placed. And again, just the joint Planning Board Housing Advisory Committee going to see Maggie and John Randolph's Workforce Housing Project in Dover. And if anybody's interested, just let me know. Darren is getting a bus from Parks and Rec because of the limited parking area, and it's going to be wet, so I'll be in enforcement already, so we have a meetup place, so we can park our cars, and I'll get in the van. So if anybody's interested, just reach out to me, and I'll send out the definite time to meet when Darren picks it.
And that's Wednesday night, correct?
That's Wednesday, 5:00.
Okay.
And Julie Gilman came, also our state rep and our select board member, and she and Nick Taylor from Seacoast Workforce Housing provided us with legislative updates.
Terrific.
Oh, and I know, Historical Society, excellent presentation. Oh, and I know, Historical Society, excellent presentation for the past to present. It was an honor to see us all as part of that with the, the former Select Board from the 70s to us. And it's till mid-November, so you have time to go see it. But they did want to express their thanks for the photo.
Great, thank you.
And getting it to them, thank you.
Right. Mr. Dean, I'm going to, just to continue with what you said on the Planning Board. I watched that meeting, the CIP meeting on TV, and I know you were on vacation. The department heads and, and Mr. Roy did an exceptional job. I thought every single department head was incredibly professional, articulate, and really seemed driven by the projects they were trying to, to introduce. So I just want to pass that along, they did a tremendous job that night.
Thank you, excellent, appreciate it.
Select Woman Cowan?
I do have one meeting to report on. We had the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee meeting where we talked about field rental usage rates. They have not been increased in, I can't remember, but it was not less than 20 years. They probably haven't been increased in more than 20 years. So it's sort of high time to do that, and then figuring out how to sort of stagger, like what is a town-sponsored league versus what is a, another league, and how to prioritize reservations around that. So we don't have anything to report yet, but we had a robust discussion, and I trust that we will have a robust proposal from staff for, in the next upcoming.
Great.
Which is great. We did talk about the tennis court repair, but it sounds like something's on hold with that. So that's what we did.
Great, thank you. Sluck Woman Shartran?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I attended a Facilities Committee meeting on August 23rd. Select Woman Gilman was there as well. During the meeting, I encouraged her to continue attending as the alternate. She has incredible professional background on facilities, and although I'm the primary rep, I think we should both be there, and I don't think there's any problem with that, correct? So I encouraged Select Woman Gilman to be there whenever she could.
Thank you.
We did receive the report on the facilities assessment. It was incredibly informative. I would love to see us distribute that to this board as soon as possible.
Mr. Dean?
Yes.
As soon as possible, okay, thank you.
Yeah, make me a note of it.
Yeah, it's really, it's really helpful, and it was a great presentation that the consultant gave remotely from Las Vegas via Zoom. I also attended a Sustainability Committee meeting, Sustainability Advisory Committee meeting on the 5th of September, and there was a great further conversation about their idea of rotating chairs by meetings. Both the staff representative and myself encouraged them to consider another way, perhaps reducing the schedule of meetings. I suggested quarterly, they're thinking about six times a year, but I think they heard the message loud and clear, and they're going to try to figure out another way. And then we had some great talk about some opt-in voluntary composting initiatives. One that they did last year, collecting pumpkins behind Lainey and Lou. It was quite overwhelming.
It's been successful in the past.
Yeah, it was quite overwhelming, the response to composting these pumpkins. So they're going to check with Jennifer Disroger at Lainey and Lou and see if she wants to continue to host that.
Wonderful.
We also had a great conversation about possibly sourcing composting, non-spillable composting buckets to distribute to town, town citizens who would like to carry their compost out to.
That's great.
Out to the transfer station. So it was a good meeting, made some headway on the whole chairmanship thing. I gently twisted Chris's arm to maybe consider being Chair. He ran the meeting, he did a great job with it. And it's, it's a great, the Sustainability Advisory Committee is doing great work right now on important subjects.
Terrific, thank you, thank you.
Yep.
Appreciate that. I had a Swayze Park trustee meeting. They talked about some of the work they're going to do now that the siphon project is on pause. They can get in there and do some of the work around the trees and, and the lawn care and stuff that they had been putting on hold until the trucks and everything were gone. But bulk of the meeting was, there was a proposal to offer from a citizen in Exeter, offered a piece of art to be displayed in the Parkway. And the trustees were very open to accepting the donation of this piece of artwork. However, the, the piece of art could be construed as a bench, or it is built to such that somebody could, could sit on that. And the trustees right now have a, no additional benches. They've had multiple requests for folks that want to put benches in people's memory, family members' memories. But the trustees several years ago voted to pause on that because they, they have enough benches. They're currently working in the very early stages of maybe how they can make that policy a little bit more inclusive to new folks and some of the older folks that they can't find that have the old benches. But as it pertained to this piece of artwork, the, the folks that wanted to donate it understood, and as conversation, and I thought I have to, I just have to say that the Chair, the trustees, Mr. Staples, did a great job of explaining why they couldn't accept it for that location. However, conversation continued, and we found a place outside of Swayze Parkway that would fall under Parks and Rec kind of overseeing it, and it would come before the Select Board to accept the donation. And I expect that will happen within the next month. They are working with Parks and Rec Director B.S. on now to figure out the logistics. It will be a very heavy piece of, it's, it's stone. And so they're working out the logistics of how they can move it to, to this location. And once they work out the logistics, they'll come before the board to offer this piece of art. The trustees then went on to say that if anybody wanted to offer a piece of art in that same location that did not, that could not be construed as a bench or someplace to sit, that they would entertain that. The folks that were representing the individual who wants to donate were from the Arts and Culture Commission, and they are very excited to continue working with the trustees and also the board.
Compromised.
So, yeah. That's all I had for Select Board reports.
Can, before we go into, could I bother you for my page back? Is it, is it handy? I can always print another copy.
The tennis page?
Yeah.
Can I give it to you when we're done?
Yes, thank you, sorry.
You will get it back.
Okay.
And I didn't write it.
I just can't, I've got to stay organized.
I will give it to you. We have a, a letter, we were copied, Select Board was copied on a letter from DES, the Department of Environmental Rental Services, for a property tax map lot number for reported alleged violation. We have advertisement for the Powder Keg Beer and Chili Festival, and as Mr. Dean said, we are still looking for volunteers. We have a program of meetings from the Exeter Historical Society. We have a letter that was written by one of our residents, Mr. Rav Fakara, talking about downtown traffic that I believe Mr. Dean has been forwarded to Mr. Sharples.
Yes.
Great.
And to the consultants by extension.
Excellent, and I responded to Mr. Fakara in writing. We have a letter of thanks from the Exeter Historical Society. As Select Woman Belanger said, pictures that we provide. Reviewing the board calendar, before we get into Select Board meetings, I will remind the board on September 18th at 5:00 p.m. in the NOVAC Room, the board will meet to conduct the public hearing for the procedural defect meeting. And the procedural defect meeting itself is scheduled in the NOVAC Room on September 29th, deliberative session portion from 9:00 a.m. to 9:30 a.m., and the voting from 9:30 a.m. to 10:30 a.m. We're scheduled to meet again on September 25th, and then looking into October and looking at the future holidays between October, November, December, I propose that the board meets October 2nd, October 16th, and October 30th. I understand that we'd be meeting back to back on September 25th and October 2nd, but I think we've got a lot of work ahead of us, and I think three meetings in October will also free up some time towards the end of the year as we get into budget season.
Say that again.
September 25th, October 2nd, October 16th, and October 30th.
When's trick or treat, do we know?
It's usually on the 31st.
Thank you.
And you said, or September 25th?
Yeah, that one's already scheduled.
That's already scheduled.
Yeah.
Just to add to that schedule too, the 91A training's been confirmed for October 18th.
Great, thank you.
So details will be coming out about that tomorrow. We'll be getting the word out.
And that's going to?
Oh, that's, that's correct. Mr. Chair, I was just reminded that the Assistant Town Manager and I will be in ICMA on October 2nd, we'll be out of town that day.
I just really don't like going three weeks between meetings. Can you participate, and I don't know the answer, but can you participate via Zoom?
We'll look into that and see if we, if one of us or both can do that.
Can we, the board still meet? We have met without you in the past before we had an Assistant Town Manager. Can we make sure that we have all of the department heads that may need to speak on discussion item?
We can do that.
And I, you know, I.
And I believe the Finance Director will be here as well. I don't want to put words in his mouth, but he could.
And the preference is always to have one of you here, but I really, with budget season coming up, we're now, you know, continue to public hearing for the 25th. I'm more comfortable having three meetings in October. Wishes, wishes of the board?
Which is the meeting that?
October 2nd.
I'm comfortable with that.
And if either of you could be available via Zoom even for part of it, that's great. If not, I'm, I'm comfortable with having appropriate department heads here.
Okay, we'll work that out.
The rest of the board comfortable with that?
Yeah.
Great.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks. Okay, it's the board calendar. Are there any other issues or any discussion items from the board? If not, I would entertain a motion to enter into non-public session under 91A, colon, 32A.
So moved.
Second.
And Sluck Woman Belanger, I would ask you to do a roll call, please.
Select Woman Shartran?
Aye.
Select Woman Cowan?
Aye.
Chair?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, excuse me, and I vote aye.
Okay, it's four zero. The board will be moving into non-public, thank you.
For tuning into Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels. Available on Comcast Channels 6 and 22. Channel 6 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU16 and can be found on Channel 8 with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Biweekly Report with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well.